Release.
Call me in order, roll call.
Okay, Mayor Weston.
Yep.
Mola. Please.
Yeah.
But, thank you.
Here.
And Counselor Wolten will be coming.
Do we have any public forums? Okay, consent agenda, any additions, instructions?
No, just to see, we saw the approved sketch of the approved building permit at the table.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Second.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Mola.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Uh, please.
Yes.
Okay, we're gonna talk about proposals for the rule wire. Nope.
You want to sit down there, John?
You can come up here. Bring your chairs up here for me.
You got that chair there.
Yeah, you can have it.
Give the consultant the cushy chairs. I don't get that.
Well, it's actually called the hot.
Armor's good.
If your rates go down a minute, you sit there.
Hey, well, thanks for having me, I'm Jared Loosie. Been with Bill now for a while, worked on and worked with him on some projects in the past. Most recently Art Flash study in two thousand and fifteen. Anyway, we can have some discussions about providing a proposal for rebuild of some of the overhead electric distribution on your guys' system. So, everybody have a copy of this, I sent this in advance, if you don't, you can...
We've been emailing out before, I didn't make that note.
Make sure they give you one, to follow along with, if you feel like not gonna make here this thing.
I ain't done that one either.
Good?
Yep.
You got extras up there?
Yep, got a few. Okay, everybody good? Alright. So what I'm gonna do is just kinda go through this from the, from the top, try to keep it brief. If you have any questions, just interject as you go, I have no issues with that. Can't say I can guarantee a great answer on everything, but I'll give it a crack and I'll defer to a follow-up email or something if, if you guys need that, so. So basically, what this document has is our, basically a brief project summary is Bill and I've kinda discussed over what, what we're all gonna do for a scope here as far as rebuilding existing part of the system. So what it comes down to is, is there was a FEMA storm replacement project that was done, I'll have to look at my, my notes here, but I think it was...
Eight years ago twelve.
Eight years ago twelve, somewhere in there.
Storm happened in two thousand.
Which one?
Yeah, storm happened in two thousand ten, and then got two thousand twelve.
Yeah, so I got twenty ten here in the damage assessment, so you guys helped, we helped you out with that and ended up after that you guys got to rebuild a decent portion of that, that had some storm damage, significant storm damage, so that was good. And there ended up being some that, some areas of the system that did not qualify according to FEMA's guidelines, and that stuff still remains. And it's, you know, coming up on about ten years older, and it sounds like that's the priority to get some of that old stuff replaced and get it up to speed and signed standards and according to some, best industry practice, you know. And stuff, as years go by, things become sturdier, insulators, conductor, everything gets a little, little better designed over time, so that makes sense that you would try to move towards replacing all kind of the old style installations in your system, so.
When you're talking about time, what's a typical rate?
Life expectancy?
Yeah.
Uh, well, kinda depends, so over a distribution, I mean, there's stuff out there that's sixty, seventy years old. Uh, when, generally when we install stuff, we say, you know, anywhere from that thirty to forty range. I mean, once you get to thirty, I mean, all bets are off depending on the type of events that directly, you know, hit that. If it's taking some storm damage, rather some ice storm, for example, you're gonna get some creep and stretch on those distribution lines, depending on materials that different stress strain property, properties, you know, depending, like, for example, a lot of steel, the straight up steel went up, or, or just straight copper, you know, copper's soft. So, over the years, that stuff's been replaced in industry with ACSR, you know, aluminum conductor steel reinforced, so you have the properties, both of the steel and aluminum, that is kind of the, the modern day, you know, beefier line, stronger, more resistant against ice. Insulators, a lot of different types of insulator installations, but a lot of, lot, lot of development in like the ties, just overall kind of.
Well, one of the things about what we're doing here in my view is we're trying to, we talk a lot about the forty year plan, we're working with our sewer, sewer, trying to get that up and online and trying to upgrade all our, our utilities and our, you know, infrastructure and stuff like that, so. My, my concern is, you know, like I said, when you talk forty years, isn't, I'm, I'm not saying guaranteed or anything like that, but typically, have you put any new stuff like that similar to us, what, what, you know, at different other locations that, that have?
I can answer that for you. They built a line, they're designing a line from Quirk's Corner north four miles in ninety-two, I think. And that line, you ever have a problem with during the two thousand ten storm?
Right, a lot of what we're seeing is whether or not stuff qualifies for the, you know, the FEMA tag, there's a lot of kinda stuff you gotta do to get FEMA qualified and, big thing you're doing, you're seeing is hazard mitigation stuff before a disaster. Generally, that stuff, the stuff we've been putting in in the last ten years with shorter ruling spans, ACSR conductor, that stuff lasts through significant ice and wind storms, so icing wind events. So, there is hazard mitigation, proactively replacing the stuff before something hits, you're not reactive, you're paying emergency raids, you're paying, you know, you're paying these guys, like the guys getting paid down in hurricane disaster areas, they're all getting paid and it's, it's, it's expensive, you know. And FEMA's relief comes after the fact, but it's generally waiting period, a lot of distress, so it's kinda going tangent from, from what I was trying to get to, but yeah, so it's very common industry practice to replace lines at the thirty to forty year range. So, basically, what our scope is, is talking to Bill there, we have about nine and a half miles of single phase overhead that needs to get replaced based on what we've spoke of, and about three miles of three-phase overhead line. And there are a number of meter poles that apparently are in pretty tough shape that need to be replaced as well, so we have forty-eight of those that are in the scope that essentially just direct structure chained out with, I, I don't know, we'll probably get into it if you put in some new meters depending on the location or just transfer things, new stuff, I don't know, we'll kinda get into the details there if we go along through the design process, but just, that's kind of the general scope. We haven't gotten into the weeds too much in terms of pole heights or any design like that as a deal that'll be to come. As I discussed, you know, industry practice, we'll try to get your guys' inventory down, a lot of different stuff out on, most people's systems, there's a lot of different stuff, and they're trying to phase it out, it's more efficient to just carry a certain set of hardware, a certain set of insulators, and the same conductor. There's a, there's a ton of benefit in reducing inventories, it's not a storage basis, sometimes you gotta keep stuff that's, very small portion of the system is particular conductor size or part number, but you gotta, you gotta keep the spares there because it's out there and it could go down and you may have to replace it, so. Now, that's kind of a pretty major part is just getting that inventory whittled down for operation purposes, so. So I'll just touch briefly, we did kinda do some cost estimation work with Bill, and we kinda keyed in and the estimated construction cost is, is gonna be probably around seven hundred and fifty thousand for the entire project. So, and that's, it's a pretty preliminary number, so we'll get, once we get through some design, we'll get a better number that you guys will be, get in front of you, you'll be able to review before you go out for business and before any contracts are awarded for the construction, so. That's kind of the, the target area that, that we're going for. So, in, in terms of preliminary schedule, I guess at this point, you know, we've, we've tried to get this thing going on design, once we get authorized, keep going on survey work, initial data collection, and then jump into the design here in the latter part of this year, get the design finished up very early, twenty eighteen, and then go out for bids in the first quarter. And so we can get building stuff in the second quarter, I think is what, what the goal should be, so. Ideas that we get designing and stuff done ahead of time, get in the contractors' plates here while they're scoping things out and providing bids at a decent time. Bill and I were just talking about, you know, what does the hurricane do to this stuff, and, you know, we're, we're pretty far away from it in terms of, in the country where you can be where you're not directly impacted by the labor shortage and whatnot, but, um, it's estimated to have some impact and, but it, by next year, things will be a little different, so. See where things are at in twenty eighteen, and, and we'll be able to see where bids are coming in and let you guys see if maybe, you know, whatever gets budgeted, you know, maybe scope adjustment on the contractor's side, is it maybe staged? We don't, we don't know enough info right now to really make any...
Typical, how long is a project like this, would you anticipate?
So what we, you know, we think probably six months or so. Depends, some, you know, if you're building in the summer, a little moisture doesn't, you know, that's not gonna, maybe beginning of later week, later months you get snow and things like that gets a little harsher, but ideas, six, seven months, but, you know, that too depends on how busy they're too, if they, they set large crews or a number of crews, kinda depends. But, uh, we can, what we'll do is in the contract, we'll, we'll put kind of firm deadlines and we can, you know, try to impose liquidated damages or whatnot to get, get stuff built. If we give them a decent amount of time, material leak times should not be a huge concern for this, distribution materials are very much widely circulated, a lot of the stuff, you know, the stuff that we'll be using here is on, on, in stock a lot of times, so, you know, material leak times won't be a concern, it'll be mostly labor and that varies, that fluctuates month by month. Yeah, roughly six months, I think. So if we wanna keep whipping through here, there's a section in the scope in B, I'd just like to go through the, we have a detailed scope written up here about what we're all gonna be doing and as part of the design, if you guys select to, if we're fortunate enough to be able to work with you here. There's this initial phase is survey where we have surveyors come out, take GPS locations of all the relevant obstructions, utilities, elevations, important things that determine how we wanna get it filled, so. There's a pretty good significant portion of data collection. So, so I'll get in here kind of an optional, there was some kind of debate, is the right-of-way verification, if it would be necessary, and if, if maybe we just, if we, if we construct in the existing alignment, there shouldn't be any issues, but sometimes it does make sense to verify pins and do a little research at the courthouse to get, you know, make sure there's no... If you're doing a significant chunk of line, you, you may wanna check the corners, but it'll be on a case-by-case basis and it would be kinda at your guys' control, like an hourly thing, if, if, if a certain part is requested to have right-of-way verified, you know, we certainly would be there for you, so. So if you turn the page into two of four, the B and scope here, so the design phase is kind of the meat of everything, and we'll be basically designing the entire line, set in pole height, pole classes, we're gonna be stringing in conductor, we use software program, PLS CAD. It's by a software company, Powerline Systems, it's kind of the cutting-edge line design software, it's, use it for tr- large transmission systems, and it's, it's just a, a very much deep, very handy tool to model these distribution lines three dimensionally. So, we'll actually be able to export, I don't know if you guys are ever in Google Earth or anything, go in the street view, you can kinda pan around and look at stuff, uh, we can actually, you just export a KMG file and you can go in the street view and you can see that line in three-dimensional capacity, so. It's pretty neat, it's something I kinda like to do with the, you'll have your trees and stuff in there in, in town and you'll see where that line's gonna come in, but anyway, that's just a, kind of a minor export out of the system, but the, the thing that the software does is it, it basically structurally analyzes each structure, each guy wire, whole line tensions. We'll export survey coordinates from this, we'll be pretty, it's, it's about as accurate as you can get in the industry, so that's, we've gone basically exclusively using that software, it's, just can't say enough about it. Anyway, we also will put together some staking sheets kinda however, you guys wanna see that work, basically, we'll unitize all the construction units and we'll get prices on, on a per-unit basis, so add and deduct units is necessary, it'll be easy to track financially, you'll be able to keep track of budget as, as things are constructed, so. Everything's designed per National Electric Safety Code and RUS for utility services guidelines, and then just in general, kind of some preferences per the city's inventories and best, best practices there. So we'll also administer, well, first of all, we'll, we'll, we'll put together bidding documents and contracts and administer that whole process, so all the specs, technical specs, we'll make sure that we're answering any phone calls for, during the bid process. We've included the ability to assist in, in receiving bids, reviewing the bids, and then providing recommendations, so. Then we'll also see through the construction phase, we'll review shop drawings, we'll review pay estimates, and then provide recommendations on the pay as we go, as the project gets constructed. We'll also do the surveying, the aspect of staking the pole, we'll put a lap at every structure or every guy wire, down guy lead, so the contractors will be able to mark things. And then also, once we do get, get done with the project, gets, gets constructed, we'll do a walkthrough site inspection, make sure it's built to specifications, and then all that, we'll put together closeout docs at conclusion showing what was paid, what was installed, basically synopsis of the financials of the project, so. And in here, I have included the fees on the next page, so you can take a gander at that, survey, we have lump sum, combination lump sum, the things that we can control, the design, that's all lump sum, flat fee, there's some hourly estimated costs in there that are pretty typical, and there'd have to be surprises to lose from those hourly estimates, and we will let you know that and get approval before any, before any of those numbers are exceeded, so. That'll be a part of, you know, communicating clearly with, with you guys on what's going on and what it's gonna take, so. Total fee we have is just the two thousand seven hundred dollars, what we think it's gonna take on our end. I did mention an optional right-of-way survey, that's kinda as we go, estimated fee of sixty-eight hundred bucks if we did the whole thing, odds are it'll be just a portion of that or none, kinda depends on what Bill and the staff decide, so. But that would be in addition to the sixty-two thousand seven hundred dollars. So, with that, I mean, we have the, this is an agreement, so technically we all got a little agreement here in your hands, but, uh, before I conclude, I'd like to, here's our, here's our fee schedule as well, what all this stuff's based on, so, just take a look at that. Any, any questions on any of this stuff, give me a call, Bill's got my contact information, there's also contact information here as well, you can contact me. And then I just put some information here and just some passwords we've done with you guys, you, you're, you're our target client, we love doing work, we live in a small Iowa community, we like working with small Iowa towns, so that's our, kind of what we like doing, so they let us do it, I guess.
So, how confident, in your experience and past jobs, how confident are you with the seven hundred and fifty thousand coming in on, on budget with that, what would you say, what does your jobs typically not do?
Um, it, it's...
If you don't know, I don't like surprises, so.
Right, well, we don't, we, if it's your surprise, it's our surprise, it reflects poorly on us, so. I would say that that's a conservative estimate, our technicians that help put together the cost estimates, they're usually not low, I mean, you just wanna make sure, 'cause we don't wanna have surprises because it's just not really good for anybody and it's a budget carrying issue, so. We actually, you know, working with Bill, he kinda trimmed some scope, we initially had a higher number, but he trimmed some scope that he thought he and the staff could get done over time, not as rapidly, but maybe highlighted some critical areas, and so, the numbers are the numbers, and I'm pretty confident, they're based on, I, I guess they're based on past projects. So, all this stuff that's, we've done in the last couple of years, we have good numbers for that, so. Unit prices can be some anomalies based on, you know, if a hurricane strikes when they're bidding and things like that, but largely, I think, we'll be fine, we'll let you know.
I'm sure you will.
Can we gather some track work?
Yes.
When we get the bids?
Yes, you can, uh, unitized basis, really easy to do that.
Yeah.
So you have direct control over what's spent. Yeah, basically, units, it, it, there'll be fifty, sixty units, this pole, this dead-end assembly, pretty easy to add and beat up. So even if, even if numbers came in low, you could say, hey, let's knock this out, we could add two poles in there if, if it was right for you guys, depending on the budget, so.
Would you be dealing with one contractor or is there some?
One contractor. One contractor, general contractor. They have the right to sub it, sub some stuff out. Generally, overhead line design, or line contractors are just, they're just that company. They won't be, if, in T-line, substation, you'll have different subs doing concrete, doing this or that, you know, they'll probably, you know, if, if we do some rock backfill, they'll probably add that subbed out to the local rock outfit or aggregate or... So, I mean, it's, it's, they'll, they'll know, you know, obviously the, the material suppliers subbed out, but we would, but we prefer to just have one point of contact where they're upstream through that, that individual.
So the question before the council is, do you know how the DGR tonight?
Yes, yes, so I guess, any more, any more questions, I guess we'll just get to it, and I have a, have an agreement here, if you guys would like us to proceed, you can sign this and, and attest to it or whatever.
We're just waiting for Ben to go here.
Did you wanna talk about Stanley's way, or?
What's that?
Did you wanna talk about Stanley, or?
This is Bill's recommendation.
Yeah, just, you know, just a, just a couple of quick deals on Stanley that, that took the two, two proposals from, Stanley did our big FEMA project for us last time, okay? But, uh, DGR's been our system engineer for decades.
Who are you confident with, that, you know, that's, that's, that's the key, that's why you're in the position you're in, so.
They came in at a lower price, though.
Yeah.
Happy with their work, so.
Is that a motion?
Yeah, it's motion, yeah.
The second. Roll call.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Mola.
Yes.
Please.
Yes.
You're higher, trim the cost.
He wants your job handled.
Yeah, you can, you can sign, and I'll get out of your hair here.
Hey, Laura, we've got you here.
Sure.
Bill, that underline, was there supposed to be some work that was supposed to be done underground?
Worry guy? It was supposed to have been done August first.
Okay, have we contacted him?
Multiple times.
And what'd he say?
No response.
So, send that letter, I'd say send a letter and start charging damages, look.
The last, I only talked to him one time, and that was before the August first, and he told me that he's gonna pay the penalty and he's gonna get the job done.
Send it up, send it to my guy.
He's got a signed contract.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've seen him.
Yeah.
We just haven't seen him.
I've seen him, but...
The money, you know, it's costly, and that's the only way you're gonna get a detention. He's supposed to spread that...
Never return like all.
Hundred dollars, that's the cash flow.
What are you looking at? Six thousand a month?
Yeah.
We already got two months in.
We'll do this, solve that, okay?
I, I kinda pointed that out to him, in case he, he must pay them, so he knows exactly where it's costing.
Yeah, I dropped in a rough outline of what I would want to see writing from him before we let him start, actually.
It's calendar, it's calendar day two, not work days.
Yeah, pay attention.
It was supposed to be done August first, and hasn't even started yet.
Yeah.
To an authority, kind of like.
Uh, underground contract.
Highly recommended.
Well, guys, thanks a lot.
Thanks, Jerry.
We'll get going, we'll get a, get it in the survey docket, and, yeah, basically, if you got any questions, give me a call, thanks for your guys' business, and we'll be in touch.
You'll give us a copy of that there?
Yes, actually, I can, I can, I can take it.
Or you, I mean, can you sign that?
I can't, no.
Okay, we'll just, we'll just have your...
I'll, I'll send a copy.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Okay, we've asked Ben to come tonight to show us some information on the fish barrier.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move right along to that, Ben.
Okay.
Please.
Just in time, I just got off an airplane not too long ago and got home and had dinner with family quick and came in, I printed off a few copies, if anybody wants a hard copy, look at if you don't have one.
They got two, yeah.
Okay. So, yeah, Scott asked, Scott the mayor asked me to come tonight, um... Yeah, we can pop those up, Scott the mayor asked me to come tonight to talk about a project that we've been talking about for several years now with the LPA and, as part of our lake improvement project, and it's over, or it's regarding the construction of a new fish barrier at the inlet. Uh, the current fish barrier that we have, that sits right there on the south side of the bridge, there in, in Provo Slough, was put in in the eighties, it's been there ever since, and that is designed to keep carp that are in the lake from entering the slough area to spawn and reproduce. So it's not designed to keep fish from coming into the lake, it's actually designed to keep them in the lake, uh, so that they have to spawn in less than ideal conditions and, and they end up being less successful. Uh, it's a common practice that we use all around the state, it can be very effective, and the problem, though, with our current barrier is it gets overtopped during high water events, water can go around it, so when we get a lot of rain, fish can challenge the barrier and they can pass it under cer- certain circumstances. The other thing that we currently don't have is the ability to manipulate water levels in the inlet. When you can dry out a lake... When you can dry out a lake basin, it can re-vegetate with plants like cattails and woolrush, and it's, uh, very effective at, uh, filtering out water and sucking up nutrients. We do not have that ability, 'cause the elevation of the inlet is tied to the elevation of the outlet structure of the main basin of Black Hawk Lake, so. In order to take the inlet levels down, you'd also have to take the lake down to do that, and, uh, so we would like to have the capabilities to manage the water levels in the inlet, so that we can keep it in a healthy functioning state, so that it always has this filtering capability, uh, to, uh, pass on cleaner water to Black Hawk Lake. And how we propose by doing that is, um, incorporating a pump structure with a new fish barrier. And this, uh, we've done this at other places, this is Clear Lake, up in Sero, Corvo County. And this is Ventura Marsh on the left, and Ventura Marsh flows into Clear Lake. And you can see, this is after a, uh, a recent, uh, drawdown, where the water in Ventura Marsh is quite clear. They eradicated the carp, 'cause carp eventually got in there, they drew it down, eradicated the carp, and then this water flows into Clear Lake, which at the time was quite turbid, you can see the difference in water clarity there. And so we're proposing to do something very similar. What our, our pump structure incorporates, Scott, would you mind going to the next one? This is a very general concept here, um, here's the existing fish barrier, uh, and what we propose to do is actually build out from the road. It was my understanding, when the fish barrier was built, they weren't allowed to tie the structure into the bridge abutment. Um, I'm sure the DOT told them they couldn't, or, or whatever, I, it was, like I said, thirty years ago, I'm not sure what the reasoning behind it was. But what we propose to do is build an earthen dike off each side, and then come out into the lake and build a fish barrier, um, there. This one would be one that is bigger, uh, that can, uh, pass more flow, handle, handle higher, uh, volumes of water. Just as a, uh, uh, kinda testament to that, the current cross-section area of our fish barrier now is a hundred and forty-two square feet. And the cross-section area of the new one would be two hundred and fifty-two square feet. So we're looking at a, about a fifty-six percent increase in, uh, area where water could pass through. Uh, the other portion of it, then, is a stoplog bay, where, when we wanted to draw the inlet down, we would drop stoplogs in and we effectively cut off Black Hawk Lake from the inlet, and then we would pump the inlet down. And the inlet, we would basically just take the water out of here and pump it right to the other side. So when we did a drawdown to, to manage water levels in, in, uh, the inlet, it would not be at the expense of water levels in Black Hawk Lake. And when it came time to, to flood or, or, um, rehydrate the area, we could start pulling some of the stoplogs and it would, it would backflow into the marsh, you know, up until whatever it reached equilibrium with the current state of the lake. Can you advance one more for me, please? So right now, this is, um, taken during a high water event, uh, as you can see, fish can make it around the ends, they can jump over the top of that. And this here is a situation where I won't send my guys out to clean the barrier. Um, the barrier has, uh, gates down below it, and they pivot, so you unlock them, and you have to get in the water and rock them back and forth to rotate them. There's a lot of flow going through there, and you don't wanna get down in it. And so we have to wait, you know, for, for water levels to recede. The new design of this barrier is you can walk out over the top of it and clean it from up above, it's, it's set at a higher elevation. But at this point here, there's not much, there's a few inches ahead difference here, so, um, you know, opening those gates doesn't really do a whole lot until water levels actually get down to where, um, they may start, uh, impeding some flow. If there's debris up against them, you can see there's a lot up against it there, so. The new barrier that we're looking at is safer to maintain, handles more flow, is easier to clean, uh, even during, uh, high water situations. And then if you, just one more, this is a photo of the inlet bay here, um, this is during two thousand and twelve, during the drought. So just to give you an idea of where it would be, it's right here, we do have a culvert over here that we would have to plug, you know, 'cause obviously if you start pumping, then the water's just gonna back, backflow. So we need to pull that culvert out and, uh, and plug that hole there. The engineers, uh, Ducks Unlimited has, uh, the engineering almost pretty well done. Um, when we found out we had funds to dredge the inlet, we kinda held off on finalizing things, because, um, now that we're gonna be dredging, so we're dredging here, out in here, and in here, and we're connecting this all with a channel. And so now we'll be dredging up close to the bridge, we can actually take the intake for our pump down even lower. And the idea behind that is, um, when we need to manage this area, and either for vegetation or to get rid of common carp, which we have common carp in Black Hawk Lake, we have seen them on this side of the barrier as well, that we can de-water this, and all that we would be left with is the pools, um, there, and we either try to winter kill them, or we'll go in and do localized rotanone treatments, uh, to kill the carp out. And, um, these holes are being dug in a way that this is the deepest area, so that as we de-water, it'll flow towards the bridge, and that we start exposing as much, uh, dry muddy areas on the fringes. If you go one more forward, this is, uh, two thousand, May of two thousand and sixteen. The main flow comes in through this channel right here, and then it hits a wall of cattails, uh, for quite a ways. And, uh, what will be different now is that we will have a hole here, here, and here, and again, um, connected with channels. So the water that comes in, um, won't be as impeded by all this vegetation, and it can make its way, uh, to the bridge. Now, being able to de-water the lake, or excuse me, the, the slough, is gonna be contingent on the year. A year like this, we might have been pretty successful in de-watering it, if we have a really wet year, we may not be able to do it. But the pump that we have proposed is a five-thousand gallon per minute pump. When we did the estimations, this was before it was dredged, that pump could de-water the inlet in eleven days. Um, since we're about doubling the volume of the inlet, you could about double the length of time that it takes to, um, draw it down. So we may ask Ducks Unlimited to revisit the size of the pump and see if something more than a five-thousand gallon per minute pump is needed. That Ventura Marsh example that I showed you, they have two five-thousand gallon per minute pumps, um, and Ventura Marsh is about four hundred acres in size. So, we have half the pumping capacity, but our slough area is about less than half the size, so we might still be all right. What we've been talking to the city about is assistance with funding this project. Um, it was, at the time that, uh, we had it designed, it was estimated at three hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars. What we've been trying to do, um, with every aspect of our lake restoration project is to partner money with different groups. As you start to leverage money, you start to open up more funding sources. So, uh, they asked me to come here today, uh, to ask you to consider, um, using some of the money from your sponsored project, uh, that will be awarded, um, through your wastewater improvement loan, to go towards this project. Uh, the Black Hawk Lake Protection Association has committed, I believe, up to ten thousand dollars, and, um, depending on if we can pull the funding sources together, there's a grant that I'm gonna apply to, uh, apply for called the Midwest Glacial Lakes Partnership. And it's for the upper Midwest and the, uh, Glacial Lakes region, and this project really fits the bill, and I, I think we'd have a good chance of funding it. And then we'd probably, whatever remaining balance we need to make up, we'd probably go to the lake restoration program to see if they could help us out if needed. Although, they're gonna be spending many millions of dollars here in, in the future, so I try not to ask for too many handouts, um, if, if they got other projects on the docket, so. I think, uh, maybe at this point I can answer any questions, uh, that you have regarding it.
When you go through this process of getting grants and stuff?
Mm-hmm.
How, how far in advance do you have to pass for it, or, and how far, how quick do they respond to it?
Well, the, the grant that I'm looking at, um, applying for is due October fifteenth, that's why I'm here tonight. And I just recently found out about this grant opportunity, that's why we're trying, kinda trying to jump on it. Uh, as far as lake restoration program, I can usually get a verbal commitment from them pretty soon, if, you know, we are able to fill, uh, put some other funding sources together. But going back to that grant, they will review the grants by the end of October, but they will not officially award them, I believe, until January or February of next year, when they actually get their allotment of money and find out how much they actually get to distribute it. And I would, uh, for this particular grant, I would consider asking up to seventy-five thousand dollars. Um, that's, I've come up with that number, basically, that's about the highest grant amount that they have awarded in the past. And I think, being roughly, by the end of it, probably a four hundred thousand dollar project, if we can generate funds from other sources and ask for seventy-five, that's a pretty good cost share amount. You know, they require a one-to-one match, and we'd be offering more than a three-to-one match, so I think would, would also make this more competitive.
Our project timing, if you, if.
So, project timing would be contingent upon the funding sources, for sure, um, if the sponsored project dollars were to be involved. Obviously, we would have to, um, you know, align our, our timeline with that. Uh, looking at the, the grant that I'm looking at applying for, the money wouldn't be available until fall of next year, of two thousand and eighteen anyways. And then you would have, I think, like twenty-four months to complete the project, so I think we could make all the timelines work. The other funding sources don't really have five-month restrictions on it.
I guess we just know as far as our sponsored project, though, we will know the actual non-sponsored project money that we have. Basically, at the end of our, the new project, they could, they didn't mean ten percent of the total cost. So the end of our project is, you know, fully over the whole day construction starting in by the, by end fall, winter, but actually, end of the project's going to be spring of nineteen, so timing ends up working out pretty well if that is the case. Makes you aim construction in each, possibly, that we're discussing, nineteen, or, yeah.
Well, I think it's gonna depend on the year, um, you know, uh, in years that we have a lot of rainfall, this type of project would be very beneficial, in years that we don't, and there's not as much water passing through, and, so it's hard to say, it, um, to, to say exactly what kind of improvement you can get from it. What we know is wetlands, which, this is a wetland, and prior to the drought, it was kind of a non-functional wetland. Wetlands are a huge nutrient sink, so, um, nutrients come in and they don't go out, because they're being taken up by plants before they get to the lake, and so we're having all that dry growth. Doing this project, I can't tell you that you're gonna see, um, a change instantly, or that you're gonna see X amount of inches of water clarity, but it is part of the overall picture of reducing sediment nutrient delivery, uh, to the main lake of Black Hawk. And this was included in our watershed improvement plan that we wrote several years ago when we started this project, so it's, it's just, it's one more piece of the puzzle.
And how, how often do you see this happening, that you would de-water and move it?
Well, we would try to do it, um, as little as possible, we would try to, um, maintain the benefits of a healthy system as long as, as long as we can, 'cause it's, it can be expensive around these pumps, um, you know, it's a lot of electricity, and that, that cost would fall onto the N R, uh, the cost of pumping and electricity. But typically, you know, a typical drought cycle occurs about every ten to twelve years. And, you know, if we're lucky, we could, um, you know, hit drought cycles and just use the pump to kinda augment the drought cycle. Sometimes we get dry years where it just doesn't quite stay dry long enough. Really, you need about two seasons of exposed lake bed to get good cattail of woolrush from them. The first year, they kinda sprout a little bit, and the second year, they, they, they come up taller, 'cause they get sprouted and the water comes up too fast on them, they drown out. Um, so what we typically do when we manipulate these types of systems is we'll dry them out for a year, let them get sprouted, and the next year just start to slowly bring water up on them, and just kinda chase the cattail of the water levels. And so, it's, like I said, we have, we have these types of structures and, and other systems, and it works well for us in terms of managing carp populations. You know, when we look at the fish renovation, I was trying to flip that lake from a turbid water state to a clear water state and just, you know, nail the, the rough fish really hard. We knew it was a matter of when, not if, we were going to get rough fish back in. So structures like these, these types of projects, these are really for the long-term management of these rough fish populations. Because I don't think we're gonna be renovating the lake anytime soon, so we can try to keep rough fish numbers suppressed through, um, incentivized commercial harvest is something that we're looking at, we're doing a research project on now, and then exclusion spotting habitat is a major component for that. And right now, we don't have good exclusion spotting habitat.
A project like that, does that take a Corps of Engineers permit?
It does, yes, so we would have to, um, and we do not have permits in hand, we would have to submit these engineering plans, um, and, uh, submit them not to, just to the Army Corps of Engineers, but also to the Iowa DNR's flood plains section. Uh, so our flood plains engineers review it, uh, our sovereign lands department, uh, reviews it, and the Army Corps of Engineers review it. And, uh, they'll be looking hard at this, 'cause we're placing fill into a water body, and, um, so they'll, they'll look at this, and, uh, but our DU engineers have designed it, um, they can do some hydro modeling in the watershed, that's the quantities of water and how to pass the water effectively, how much you need to get the job done. Yeah, we can't, we can't build anything without permits. This will also require an archaeological review, if it's on sovereign land, but we went ahead and did that review, and we did the archaeological review for the inlet dredging. So that portion is done, and, uh, we will be cleared on that.
So we got something in mind about the, 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 the.
Well, um, so I guess at the end of the day, the sponsored project money, I believe, is the city's to determine what they do with it. It's a program administered by the DNR, a different part of the DNR than I'm in, but it's up to you to decide how you want to spend that money. It just has to be spent on water quality improvement projects, essentially in this area, and, uh, you know, we'd be, we'd be looking at somewhere in the tune of probably two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand dollars, potentially. We would probably try to get an updated, uh, uh, an updated estimate from our engineers, 'cause time has passed since this, um, thing's been designed, and costs seem to do nothing but go up. But, uh, we would probably, uh, ask them to finalize their plans just based on the changes in elevation, and then an updated cost estimate. And then probably sit down, and I guess, so what we're looking for is maybe a commitment to send money towards this project, and, uh, it's up to you guys to decide when you do that, but if, once you do decide, if you make the decision to fund this, then I would probably start putting that grant application together and, and show the city of Lakeview as a, um, a partner in funding for that project. And it also depends on how many other projects you're looking at when it comes to your sponsored project dollars.
And that does end up being really, that made it determined it is what else we might do with the project? And really good, the only thing that, that we talked about, um, in depth, would be the impressive. I think that was all along.
Well, I'd like to ask the LPA, you've got to say a few words, please?
Yes, I'm Jim Melonacher, thank you, Mayor, and for your time. I'm on the board of directors of the LPA, and we've got other board members present tonight, along with Sarah Thompson, who can more, more for people, and Chris for everything, and also a former board member, fallout, who's kind of started our lake association, and another former board member, Ken Stangton, who, since we have a two-term limit, is lucky enough to, uh, serve all that time and now is a former board member, thank you. At our last board meeting, we also had election of, of officers, and the current officers of the LPA, myself as treasurer, Sarah as the secretary, and then, uh, Mark Frye is our vice president, and Scott Kuhn is our new president. I was discussing with Scott and asking him if he could afford that, and, and our support to them's request here for this project. We just wanted the council to know that our last board meeting, and I think Ben mentioned, we did vote to finance and support this inleted, uh, project. We voted to commit up to ten thousand dollars. The project is a continuation, a series of projects, that'll enhance the water quality of our lake, and thereby improve the water quality that leaves our lake and enters the Rocking River watershed, just to Des Moines. We all know the importance of Black Hawk Lake to the economy of Lakeview and Saco, now and in the future. And the water quality of our lake and this watershed are truly the driving force in our economic planet. So as you move forward on deciding how to allocate the water quality initiative funds, we simply encourage you to generously include the inlet bay fish barrier conservation project. we simply encourage you to generously include the inlet bay disgrader constipation project. Dan, thank you for your time. Nice to meet you, Mayor.
What we're looking for tonight is this motion that the city is coming along with this project, that's all that's open to view. When you give rid of the rough fish, I think that's a big thing for the lake, and not in control sometimes.
Yeah, it's not about getting rid of them anymore, it's about managing their numbers at very low densities.
Thank you, Ben, and you all three, for everything you do.
You know where I work, if you have any more questions or anything like that, I'd be happy to talk to you about it.
I do have a question for you, Ben, about how you proceed then with this next grant application.
Yeah, well, so that's-
How much, how do you, how much do you need to show Meru's match? We said we're committed to being partners with you.
Right, no dollar amount. And I understand that you don't even know the exact dollar amount that you're gonna get until the project, your, the Lagoon project's kind of completed, and you borrowed all the money, which essentially sets the amount that you're gonna get. I think, you know, we could probably sit down and kind of safely make some assumptions on how much you'll get. Up to, you know, you'll, you'll likely get three hundred thousand dollars, I would assume. And I think what we can, we can do is try to add all that together and come up with a solid dollar amount. Do you need that tonight, like a solid dollar amount?
Kind of like the other way around, do you need that tonight?
I don't need it tonight, I just need it by, by the time I submit the grant.
Which is the fifteen, we'll have another company before then, so.
You will, or you will not? Oh, you will not? Okay.
So, if we were to say we make eleven hundred and ten thousand, what, what do we estimate that total cost of, of the last number that we have with the?
We're, we're good for up to four hundred and sixty-five thousand, assuming that the project, this Lagoon project ends up happening. Do you agree with that?
So, if, if we were to utilize up to ten thousand from the LPA, and we were to be awarded the seventy-five thousand dollars from this grant, and we're using the estimate, that's all I got right now, is a three hundred sixty-five thousand dollar estimate, then we would need a remaining two hundred and sixty-five thousand without any other funding sources. Which, if you were awarded the full amount of your sponsored project, would leave you another two hundred thousand dollars to do other improvement projects. And then if we had to make up the remaining balance, that's probably where I would go to the Lake Restoration Program and ask for the change.
Does it give you a commitment on the dollar amount tonight, or does that help you?
Yeah, it does, yeah.
Start with a plate, Ben?
Thank you.
Thank you, Council.
Okay, we're gonna talk about Kent, Preston Improvement Project. I'm sure Bill wants to go on this.
John, call me when you want to work on the machine again.
Welcome back.
Just real quick, look to page ten. Just a reminder more than anything else about, about projects, project areas that we were talking about. Those are the lots that we would look at. Rerating that, raising elevation over the drain properly, and, and putting plenty of paths in that area.
Hang on, yellow would be the bio retention cell?
Oh, no, Bill, go ahead and take my seat. I'll blame it on the mayor.
We didn't see you come in. Come on up.
I'll get a chair.
So again, just, just the notion that we want to raise that, so, and try to get all the water there to drain to the, to the east, kind of the east fence line area. And then where you see the yellow, that would be an extended bio retention cell, or a big rain garden, or something to, to encourage drainage. What that is just has everything to do with the, with the lay of the land down there, and whether we can get a tile to drain into the lake, and be very close and would be very close. So, we discussed the project before, and, and everybody really wanted to keep plugging along on the project. Then on page nine, and we've seen that before too, is, is a proposal from, from Meru Engineering about having them do some engineering work on that, which basically would be having them do a lot of survey work in the area, come up with the drainage plan, and prepare some plans for, for, for the project, but not have them bid and implement the project, we do that in-house, so.
I had a question on this, is, is there a plan to drain the whole area, like the one fifties, one sixties, that whole area in there?
I just think that we need to really have some good information before we would look at that, so.
We haven't put those up for rent, have they on the website?
They're, they're blocked off. You could see one fifty's are still available at all. So, I mean, if it looked at, I would have a bunch of new dirt for fill in there or something, that would fill, you probably have them.
The city, I don't know if the, does the whole council know about that, John?
I would mention it, we're plugged up later day.
It was, it was horrible. There's a, the city sewer main comes along Crescent Park Drive here, and then just follows Third Street, and then goes in that lead station. There's only a four-inch line that comes off that city main that takes here that whole campground. And Charlie Green told me it was two hundred, I think twenty-five camp sites rented out that day. Well, I figured four people a site, you got closer to a thousand people there. On a four-inch line, and your houses have a four-inch line to your house. The pipes, the water was running out of the top of the pipes, out of the ground, that day. We were down there for four hours, four and a half hours, and just, you couldn't even see it go down, it was just-
And chunks of plastic came out.
Flashlight?
Four lights.
So, what, what, what are you saying, that we're gonna use that? We just tell them where, we gotta put in the water.
Well, sorry to Scott, if you're gonna add more camping sites with sewer, we've already got a problem with the sewer. The city needs to address that sewer problem.
Yeah, this, and that would be one of, one of the issues for them to look at. You know, sewer in general, but all these sites over here and down through lakefront and everything, they don't have, they don't have sewer, because they don't have the capability to gravity feed. Now, if you're raising that up a little bit, maybe you would have capabilities-
What's how many feet of sewer line do you really talk?
Well, it's all the way across the whole campground. Jerry, you know where the dump station is, where they used to? When the city did this, they had a four-inch line to that dump station, and that's all they had. So, campers pulled up, dumped in there. But then they added on to that line to this area, then added on this area, and this area, and this area. Even the same four-inch line, that was, that was initially designed, there's a manhole there, that was initially designed for one dump station. And now you're throwing two hundred twenty-five per night, maybe two hundred twenty-five. There's, there's two hundred twenty-five people times four, eight hundred thousand people.
This would be our chance to go from that, that dump site to the main with the larger line.
You, you need to go, do you have? Can't be the guy who's across the street there, Scott? I'm not sure where he is. Across the road, and Randy Dross's.
Oh, Randy.
You know Randy Dross, the mother lives across the road to the center of town. Yeah, straight across the road, that's where, that's where it taps into the city main.
That little guy?
Had Dick Cloud?
Dick Cloud, so you'd have to go from virtually his side of the street, or, I mean, it's on the campground side of the street, to that dump station, then you pick up both, there's two bathrooms on there too, and showerhouses.
So, are all those sites, are those sites connected into that main?
That whole campground is connected into a four-inch line.
Well, I get, I get that, are these directly, do they dump directly into that main, or do they go through another ladder?
From what I've seen out of that dump station, there's only two pipes.
So like the, so then like Dick Cloud, is that, how big a line is?
He's, he's on, he goes into the city main.
That's what, twelve, sixteen?
Oh, how big that, I would say fifteen, yeah.
Well, I was just wondering how big that was, we don't handle it.
Well, you realize, well, that's also, that comes all the way around the lake right now, you know. But you're gonna relieve some of that when you put the Lagoon in, but, I mean, that line was smoking the day we were down there. And that's what, why it was taking the campground so long to drain too, plus it was full.
This would be a chance to have Murd take a look at that and see if they-
They gotta, they gotta address that, yeah. Well, it wouldn't have to be bigger than that main, that's, you know, fifteen would be the biggest, that's what it's going into. I think while you're doing it, you just want, this diameter pipe doesn't cost, you dig it, it costs money. Just, without me knowing, and measuring, I see, you'd go with the same diameter line that the city main is.
They can wore that?
I'm sure they can. But I think you try to find maps down there, you can't find any maps. You know, it's, like I said, everybody just keeps adding on and adding on, and they don't look at the whole system. And it'll, and it, it, yeah.
Make sure it's done right, so.
It doesn't bite us again?
Yeah, so we gotta, so we know what our options are.
Yeah, and also improve the dump station.
Because we always talk about that.
I heard that, this has been going on for quite a while, this, this dump station deal. But you can see, that's what, that was all the campground had, was a dump station, there was no other sewer. You know, where you just keep hooking on lines.
Well, you see, you see what kind of, you know, this goes back to days when you said it was-
That can answer-
From that bathhouse, this would be another part of making a, a better campsite.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I think this row here, Scott, ties in ahead of that dump station, so there'd be another line. This line right here along Third Street, that line goes into the four-inch before it gets to city main. And then you got two other dump sites in here, so there's at least three lines into that four-inch.
Does that have to count or do that to find out, or you just don't, uh, stand down there and see where it goes?
I'm sure this is a four-inch, because that's what they came up into everybody's site with. But like the two down here, you can measure by just opening that manhole. And then we, we can open the manhole over here, and I say that's another thing. We had campers parked on top of the manhole, you don't have access to work. And they don't, trust me, they don't want to root where they're, where they're-
Well, do you want to hire that Murd and take a look at this, so we know what we're doing? I think so. You know, that motion to hire Murd.
Reese, plus, thank you.
Yeah, more.
Yes.
Okay, we have an update on the splash pad? We have some work to do.
More upgrade, update, there's a debate, and these are on, on your table then. Yeah, no, for Bill. Bill can see, do you, you have the information?
I know, Bill.
We're looking out.
Not funny, is it?
It keeps getting better. Well, nothing will be worse than that campground that day, I'll tell you that.
I'd asked Outboard Recreation Products then for a breakdown of their total quote. They've given us their total quote before the last council meeting, and that's what it was, hundred points, thousand, eight hundred points seven dollars. But, they're proposing then to do a substantial amount of work potentially this fall. So I needed them to break that out to what would be for this fall versus what's the work that would be accomplished then next spring. So, my handwritten numbers there are the amounts then for, for this fall versus next spring. So the whole, the concept here about the work to be done this fall, and just kind of follow that down. That they would excavate the area, and, and we haul in dirt, they compact it, furnish and place this compacted recycled concrete base that's twelve to eighteen inches. And then the, a lot of the plumbing and everything goes into that recycled concrete base. They would install puddings, and then, you know, they're getting all of, all of the plumbing work done, and then potentially go ahead and pour the concrete splash pad. So, if they were to accomplish everything that they would propose to do this fall, it would, the splash pad would essentially be installed, everything at grade would be installed.
So, does the splash pad have the pads, and can just run dirt on all the time, or whatever?
It's not proposed to have pads.
But are, like the traffic thing, gonna run dirt and grass and everything else on that, or?
It does, you know. It, it, you know, grass and stuff would, would get on there, and, and it's designed so that's, you know, if there's that, let's say grass or leaves or whatever, you know, that it does end up in sewer, and that ends up in sanitary. Just, I guess, so that's the, the concept, is they, they could, they would do work this fall as much as possible, and that's seventy-eight thousand dollars worth. And, and when we get right down to it tonight, we'll ask the council to approve the ordering of the amount of stuff to be done this fall. Take a look at the second page on that. They called those items for the fall are the embedded items, everything embedded in the ground. No other six-week lead time on getting those embedded items. So, that means they look at, to start construction around the second week of November, or earlier if they happen to get the, the stuff delivered here earlier. They do need about twenty-five, thirty-five yards of dirt on site, Bill, and that'd basically be about our only obligation for it. They had a three-man crew that would come, work basically as long as weather allows. And then, again, that site prep, that crushed concrete base, putting in the puddings, roughing in the plumbing, do an electrical potentially, then pouring the slab. So, what do they need in order for work to continue throughout this time? Because, you know, obviously, weather's a concern, but he just said, you know, ground needs to be dry enough for them to work, and that they're not causing more damage than what they're accomplishing, and that they cease work when there's, when there's, you have to be some inches of frost, he said, three to five inches of frost. And of course, they don't pour concrete then and poke the ground. John asked them today about when historically their last work day has been, and it's been around December eighth. Is, is when they tend to get wintered out. Work not completed this fall goes first on the list then for next spring. Billings of the items, us paying for the items, they're done as work progresses, with payment due after thirty days. First payment then would be due, due thirty days after receiving the embedded item. It's not that entire seventy-eight thousand dollars, it'd be one of the top furnishings are twenty-five thousand dollars. And then they, they will commit to a contract completion date to be May twentieth.
But the plumbing going first?
Pardon me?
The plumbing going, and plumbing electrical going under?
It does, it goes in. They, they put that, that twelve to eighteen inches of that crushed concrete, and, and it is all recessed in that, in that crushed concrete. And just the last page is the warranty information. Basically, for their hydraulic components, that type of stuff, they're looking at two years. Any of the big stainless steel features and stuff, they're looking at five years. They have the one-year workmanship warranty on the installation. Which I, you know, certainly can understand, be concerned about the work to be done this fall, if the weather's starting to turn cold.
Is there any way you can talk to them to find out where they have what I call a lake pour during the cooler weather, and see if there's any other people have problems with the, you know?
Is there any way you could talk to them and find out where they have what I call a late pour, through the crew or weather and see if they, any other people have problems with the, you know? I, we talked about Dallas City, okay, for example, they, if we could find a town that said, well, yeah, they came in here and poured in November. And I guess one of the questions I asked, how's it, how's it going?
How's it holding up?
How's it holding up? Did you see, I don't wanna be there.
I would say after you get past, much after twentieth of November, you're looking at pretty risky.
I was looking at the summer versus the done day.
Yeah.
Well, that's that's like, you know.
And they're not really planning to start until the second week in November, so.
But.
Couple days, it'll take me six months.
Well, for for the entire, for the entire amount of work that they're gonna do, it'd be a matter of, you know, otherwise they were talking about site prep, you know, prep.
Who hauls the dirt in the city?
We haul, we haul dirt in, but it's like five truckloads. And and, you know, that's about it.
Explain that as the money.
Yeah. We we can check on that, and because I think what it really amounts to is then managing the install this fall more than anything else. That if we can commit to doing this and you get to a point where you don't feel comfortable doing anything, we just film that and continue. Um so, you know, I think we, by managing the installation this fall, we feel pretty good about that, and they've given us a hard completion date of May twentieth in the spring, and we feel a little bit about that.
Start out after though, too, like I said, we're gonna be moving, getting there. And now in that path, right?
I thought they was gonna leave it set until spring, so they didn't do that.
Really the original idea was we wanted to get a site and that was about it, now we have this, what I look at as an opportunity to do a lot more work.
But I know that, but look at your street up here where they went in and dead it and it cracked. And part of that's because it didn't get settled.
Are they leaving it up to the city to tell them when they have to stop?
I don't know, I think they'll stop if they're committed, we're gonna have to pay.
Well, I mean, that would give you control if you say you can't go.
Well, I mean, we would just, we would just do it anyway.
If it's getting cold, we're gonna stop.
The, as the owner, you know, we're, we do end up with a lot of work on leave.
I'm just worried about dirt settling and compacting and frost moving it. I'm no concrete, the only thing I know about concrete is it gets hard to crack.
I agree, you almost have to look at somebody else who's put something like this in in these months.
That's what these guys do for a river, right?
Yeah.
It's pretty cold.
You'd give you a year warranty too, you know. Is there a rebate on this?
Um only that, only that you only pay after the work's done, thirty days after the work's done.
If it gets cold, we're gonna stop.
At least you got leverage to then.
You know, it could be seventy degrees.
Well, we had nice storm on Halloween, too.
Yeah.
All right, so let's keep that in mind, because you can want a motion to.
Can we have a motion to enter into that first part of the reading?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Go call. Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Reese?
Yeah.
Hoss?
Yes.
Walton?
Yep.
Okay, this is the second reading of ordinance four eighty-seven. Make that motion.
Go move.
Second?
Second.
Go call.
Okay, Walton?
Yep.
Moller?
Yes.
Reese?
Yeah.
Hoss?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. Okay, the second reading of ordinance four eighty-seven. I'll make that motion.
Second?
No, I'm sorry.
Go call. Thank you.
Yes.
Hoss?
Yes.
Reese?
Yeah.
Moller?
Yes.
Walton?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Resilience seventeen twenty-three is our tax abatement for the bathtub house.
Prior approval for tax abatement for that.
Go move.
Second?
I'll second.
Go call. Moller?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Walton?
Yep.
Reese?
Yeah.
Hoss?
Yes.
Okay, Speaker Park Waterwell, cheaper than fifty thousand.
Looks a little better than I thought.
Get some make ones.
Is there anything you wanna add to that, Bill?
No, I, let's see, if you put another bid in, his first bid is forty-five thousand. His second bid is sixteen thousand eight twenty-one.
What a difference.
I think you must look something over.
Yeah, I guess, just know that uh after we had that that spent bid from from Kahoy, the bill got hold of Sergeant. Sergeant came up and did a lot more investigation on that all. This is not the same setup that was being replaced, okay? But it doesn't need to be. We we had a big pump in there way back in the day before we had a water plant, we pumped directly into the system and it pressurized the system that way, it had a much greater pump.
Forty-five hours, ten hours.
And and this one is uh, yeah, substantially less, this just needs to pump over to the water plant. And then that that's pumped out into the system. So the design is different than than what it, than what was removed, but Sergeant and the wife bid the same system.
It will be our needs.
Oh, yeah, that's the bottom line.
And uh he called me today, he said he will, he will start, if you guys approve this, they'll start it by one, three, two days.
Make the motion go.
And he hammered the well himself at his loss.
My second.
Started. Go call. Okay, Reese?
Yeah.
Moller?
Yes.
Walton? Thank you.
Here, we finally got a price on the PA system, so we can come up from here.
They only appreciate that.
Yeah, thank you.
Uh this is from uh Clyde Brenner, and I guess you can refer to the request, uh two thousand sixty-eight dollars. That uh would have microphones and ceiling speakers and also a good portion of the of the cost is for a new camp for our online presence, it's not very good. So, that would, that would help.
Not a problem.
You know what, do we have somebody to budget to?
This is the only bid you took on it.
We got it.
We didn't wanna do it.
Second? Go call. Moller?
Yes.
Hoss? Thank you. Walton?
Yep.
No. Not necessary. I don't like it, if I wanna be on camera, I've got to act it.
Any administrative reports?
I do have a few things. Just know that we, the library has been awarded that, the consultant grant that they applied for, to have the consultant come in then and do space needs of this facility. So we have been awarded that, so that's gonna kick off pretty quick. Mayor pretty much got the harvest shirt done and and ready to go away for storage for the winter, going into Lakewood to be stored for the winter. Just know that the the uh storage fee, the rental fee is there, it'd be about seven. But we're going to drive, we're achieving it. Yeah, always, they said it's above, but we. Uh our auditor's coming tomorrow to do work. And. The, that intersection of the of the street out there by Dixie Land and and uh Boston. We had had talked with the county last year about working with them to redo that intersection, okay? Well, they came back and they have hired Ten Point Construction to redo that intersection. And Ten Point's gonna start tomorrow. They start tomorrow, tear the thing out, tear out the whole intersection and reconstruct uh it all just at one time to solve. Uh then we close off, that if the intersection will be closed off or bottomed. I I'm telling people we have made. Uh and then the engineer called today to talk about paying for it. Because I would tell you that, you know, at least half the streets out there are city streets. And that the the city partners with with county on on these type of farm market roads through the through the city, it's common that uh that payment arrangements would be fifty fifty. And he says, uh lower cost on that, on redoing that intersection's thirty-one thousand dollars. And was very apologetic that we were never even closing. But.
We're in the city on state now.
Yeah, there would be an expectation that we paid for that.
What happened to the state and the county?
That it's not involved with the state, which is a good, you know, have a.
I thought that was their vote.
Or the state vote comes up through the stop sign and then from from then on up, it's gonna be, it's gonna be city and county. And actually, the entire intersection is in the city limit. When you get right down to it, the, he says the the project cost to be about thirty-one thousand dollars, like split fifty fifty. And he understands that uh we haven't been involved in the in the project at all and uh so we'll be able to close off until next budget year to have any, any payment from the city. It's.
That's a hard cost if it goes down?
That's, it's, it's based on a, on a per square yard cost and a quarter to ten square yards and if it comes in as the as the estimate and stuff. So we, you know, it's kinda like anything else, four more than that's not costing.
Is it, is it part of the, whatever they just.
They, it's part of uh of a, a bigger patching project for county, although it's not this one project.
And they, Ten Point, that's a lot of that.
Or.
For the county.
We had nothing to do with this, with this uh project as far as lining the up new building from the contractor, that does compensate us. Uh and we think, and hopefully the project comes together like it wants to well. It truly is much easier intersection.
Well, they did, I mean, we. I'm gonna even watch him decide on whatever.
Contract.
They got, still wait out.
Okay. I've heard about you. I think, yeah.
I knew the most, you get through the room.
Yeah. I just gotta figure out where I can get that, uh to look tomorrow where I can get. I'll bring that down there.
So we're gonna ask you, we're gonna go up, hold on about that, or how do you, how do we see?
I guess just know that work's gonna be done tomorrow.
Yeah, I will go up there.
You have a motion that you want to make, or?
I wouldn't even intend that for you, so.
Okay, you want to go on the chat? I'm not asking for nothing, I already.
That county league meeting, that thing up there, but it's next Thursday, twelve.
That's on up, up there.
Thursday, it's Thursday, isn't it? Make Thursday?
Sure.
Next day?
Yeah.
Look good?
Yeah. Yeah.
Scott, I want to link the cities and thousands of work, and I think it's fifty different classes in the table. I think we have to private or something like, you know, it's always worth something. Well, not all cater to big city stuff, but a lot of stuff. Recent statement, public volunteers, something like that. I think we're done with this, we're working there.
On the.
Second?
Maybe at seven o'clock.
Thanks, Bill.
I know what that.
Maybe at seven o'clock, maybe.
Yeah, both at five. Six. And at six thirty.